Called order the Westlake City Schools regular board meeting for Monday, February the 28th, 2022. Roll call.
Craft.
Here.
Kurna.
Here.
Fenuken.
Here.
Losensky.
Here.
Stole.
Here.
Would you join me, please stand and say the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in our hearts. Thanks, everyone who's joining us tonight, either here or online. We appreciate you being here. Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Stole.
Yes.
Kurna.
Yes.
Fenuken.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Losensky.
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we have the superintendent's presentation. Great, thank you. Let me jump into. Zoom. Chairman's screen, thank you Todd. Share this. Slideshow, okay, this is gonna be a short presentation this evening, just to kind of go through some masking requirements and some changes that happened right before the weekend. So, we had met at our board meeting, February 7th, thank you, I was gonna say 8th, and talked about the lifting of some masking requirements. We lifted at Westlake High School on February 9th. Then that following Monday, on February 14th, we lifted in grades K through 8. Then, that first week, we had some adjustments to do, kind of getting, you know, things together. And we then waited and had lifted for, we continued during choir and singing during that first week. And then we ended up lifting that as well. So those are the kind of the different stages so far that we did with lifting the masking requirements. And then on Friday, we had heard going into, it was pretty national news where there were supposed to be some updates coming from the CDC in regard to their COVID protocols. We did expect some, but we didn't know what exactly to expect. I know that the transportation protocol is set to expire, I think sometime in March anyway, so we weren't sure if they were gonna lift it immediately or wait for it. And so, it was released and I did just copy and paste the section here that was relevant from Friday. And as it states in there, it says that they do not require that people wear masks on buses or vans operated by public or private school systems. And so that was the first one. And one of the things that we didn't lift was the requirement that we had on our buses, and that was because the CDC did require it before Friday. And what was interesting about Friday is they announced it on February 25th and said effective February 25th. And it's tough to get when they do a data drop or media drop on a Friday afternoon, then you're trying to communicate that with families over the weekend, and it just adds a little, you know, thankfully, we have the school messenger program to be able to send that out, but that's what happened there. Now, the other one that's interesting when you read it and it says, and it goes through, yeah, good, you can see my cursor. And it says CDC is making this change to align with updated guidance that no longer recommends universal indoor mask wearing in K-12, which is what we already had in place. But then they even added after it, and early child, early education settings. Now, the one place where I showed you that we had the high school had lifted, grades K through 8 lifted on the 14th. We even lifted some protocols in the music classrooms and in choir. And I just want to say, when it comes to choir, especially when you get into our higher levels of choir, the teacher may still ask some of the students to mask and even for sound quality things, because if we're singing next to each other and some are masked, some are unmasked, so there, you still might see some of that. And then, school transportation, we lifted today. And then, you know, as it stated here, it's saying that it no longer recommends the universal indoor mask wearing in the early education settings. And so what we do need to determine is preschool. Because that, if you look at all the communication we sent out in regard to transportation, we directly cited that, you know, this is in place due to CDC requirement on here. But in preschool, really, that's just been our decision, is that we've not lifted it in that area. To give you an idea, so when I pulled the I pulled two of, so if you, I've said this before, we end our counts on Thursdays. And so it, there was one that ended, so when you look at that, we ended the mask requirement at the high school on February 9th, that was a Wednesday. There was a chart posted on the 10th, but it really wouldn't be a fair reflection of having masks off, because it was really just a day. So I did pull the dashboards from the 17th, which was eight days after the high school. And then the 24th. So when you look at the 17th, which is the dashboard that's on the left, we had four cases in the elementary student cases, zero cases, student cases at the intermediate school, middle school, and one case at the high school. And through that week, zero staff cases that we had closing the week of the 17th. Then on the 24th, we had three total cases, this was last Thursday. We had three total cases, one reported, one at the elementary school, one at their intermediate school, and one at the high school, and one reported staff case at the elementary school. So really, with tonight, when we get into, I have this on as a resolution, to talk about the updated continuity of education plan. I do believe it's time to make that adjustment in preschool. And that is something, and I know I have Kathy Nash here, who, when we get in the conversation, we have one of our preschools here that can share her perspective. And I know Dr. Morgan spoke with some of the other preschool teachers today as well, so we can, if you need to know that direct perspective from the preschool, we have either Kathy Nash here or Dr. Morgan can give you some insight to that. This, the other part that I think is going, and the other question is gonna be if we are gonna make that change, when? You know, I don't think it should be tomorrow, because you don't, we typically don't surprise people with that. And when we made the adjustment from the, in the other schools, especially when we went K-8, I think we had a meeting on Monday, and then it was the next Monday, we lifted it. We did have things to figure out, like music and some other type of things that we needed to look at. Here, we've already changed K through 8, I mean dropped it K through 8, we already dropped it 9 through 12. I don't think you need a week, I mean, because the school is pretty much running without the mask requirement, except for that preschool, and then we could talk to Kathy and see if she believes that their team would need any additional time, other than just communication time, to make that happen. Another part that I haven't, the second bullet, which I haven't heard anything about yet, that's whether or not there's gonna be changes to masks to stay and test to play. When we are in, and this is something that I'm just assuming, there may be no changes to it. But I'm just really curious on, when they say, we don't recommend the universal masking, when we're in a certain weather, lower, medium, whether they even recommend to do masks to stay and test to play at this point? Are we gonna see a week later, and that's another thing that's tough, is we had our, this media drop on Friday. And then we have our board meeting on Monday. And by the end of the week, there could be new guidance from ODH, kind of talking about masks to stay and test to play, and I can show you inside the continuity of education plan, where I just put a disclaimer in there, saying that if ODH changes it, then I'll make an adjustment to that. So I don't know what that's gonna do, is it gonna change the contact tracing procedures? Are they to a point where they're saying, you know, you don't have to contact trace this anymore? I don't, I don't know about those two, but I just want to put that on the table, so you guys understand that after we had this media drop on Friday, what are the next dominoes to fall in our next board meeting, isn't until March 28th? So, you know, if they do drop masks to stay and test to play, if they do adjust some of these things, I did put a little asterisk, isn't it March, am I wrong with?
We have a work session on the 14th.
Work session, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Scheduled for.
Yeah, you're right. But, so just so you guys know that those are, those are coming, and that's why I put some flexibility, and even just, because I've been questioning, saying, well, you know, how can you do this without a board vote? And it's like, well, we do put asterisks in there that allow me, but I just made it a little bit more clear, so then when people see it, they'd understand. That is my presentation, and then what we can do is go on through the agenda a little bit, and then when we get to my first item, which I think the first, first or second item, second item, first ones donations, to talk about the continuity of education, and we'll take it from there. So I can answer any questions if you'd like.
Any questions from the board?
No.
Yeah. At this time, we have a hearing of the public. The public may address the board during the periods of the meeting designated for public participation. Each person addressing the board shall give his or her name and address. If several people wish to speak, each person is allotted three minutes, until the total time is allotted, has been used. During that period, no person may speak twice, until all who desire to speak have had the opportunity to do so. The period of public participation may be extended by a vote, if the majority of the board present in voting. Is there anyone who would like to address the board at this time?
Seeing none, I'm going to move on to the superintendent's report, oh, I'm sorry, we're going to approve minutes. We've all had an opportunity to review minutes from January the 10th, as well as January the 24th. All those in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All of those opposed, say no. The minutes are approved, and move on to the superintendent's report. Okay, so I will go through Google Doc here, I'd like to do a couple things. First is, we do have Bridgette Royce here. Bridgette, if you can kind of step into an area where the board can see you. Now, what's
Hello.
I don't know if, I'm assuming the board knows Bridgette. Bridgette is one of our gifted intervention specialists at DIS. And she is our current recipient of the Excellence in Education, in teaching, is what she is. Bridgette was nominated by her peers, selected by a committee of previous winners of this award. And what was nice is, we typically do it at board meetings, but board meetings have been a little eventful, and you know, so we wanted to make sure that we had proper recognition and in a nice atmosphere to recognize our award winners. And the other one is Evelyn Urban from the high school, is the Excellence in Certified. And so we did a thing where we went to each of the buildings and recognized Bridgette in front of her peers. It was really nice where Nick called together a staff meeting in the morning, and all the teachers were there, and we're able to embarrass Bridgette, which is what we should do. And so that was really nice, then we did cookies, and Dana went and got cookies from Stick to Your Bones Bakery. And we did that, so we're able to recognize her and invite her to our board meeting, so we can recognize you publicly, and thank you for everything that you do for our students. And a couple, one of the big highlights is, if you've gone to the Pollinator Garden that was created over at DIS, I think some of you came to the opening of that, and it's just the wonderful things that she does. Anything you want to share with us at all?
I just want to say thank you, it was such a pleasant surprise. You know, Nick had called this staff meeting, and I had no idea, and I was wearing my mask at the time, and you couldn't see it, but I think my jaw hit the floor. So that was really sweet, and it's just really, it feels very nice to be acknowledged, and I really appreciate that. And especially now, having my own child in the district, just gives me that motivation to work harder every day, and I really appreciate it.
In kindergarten.
And you know you do tremendous work, and I hope you know that we know that you do tremendous work. We've had an opportunity to interact with you a little bit, and as things are loosening up a little bit more, we hope to spend even more time with you. So thanks for making us a part of some of your days, and we look forward to more of those, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, my report really, I'm gonna give relatively quickly here, and I'm gonna talk about some agenda items. I've kind of clumped them together here, I'm not gonna go item by item. An area of pride that we have with the Westlake City Schools is working with our city for the best interest of the entire community. One of the nice things about being in the Westlake Schools is we all serve the folks in 44145. It's, you know, we have a boundary, and we have one city that we service. So it's really nice to, when we can partner with the city, and as the mayor likes to say, we create the win-win-win. You know, the win for the school is the win for the city and the win for the community. There is a resolution on here regarding the Parkside Building. Just to give a little history to that, Parkside was part of the land exchange for the schools to acquire the property on Center Ridge Road, where we have our new elementary school. This was put in because not only did we receive the property, but extensive roadwork, which was the widening of Center Ridge Road, a deceleration lane, a turning lane, a traffic light, so there are a lot of costs that came along with that, and this went in. Now, one of the options, and the reason there's a resolution on, is when we did make this trade, we did put in a clause indicating that we had the ability to buy Parkside and the property back, if we so, if we would so choose. And what we did is, we based the number for that on the, at the time, which I'm sure would be different right now. You know, but at the time was the land-only value of $700,000. Now, at the time, it was appraised at $1.1 million, and also at the time, we estimated, received estimates of about $400,000 to take down the building. So we took the $1.1 million minus the $400,000 scrape-off cost, and so we could purchase it back for $700,000. But if we were to do that, we would then be taking on the scrape-off cost, which I would be willing to bet has escalated quite a bit. Like, at this point in time, with what people are having to pay for things like that. And so that's not really in our best interest circumstances, we already have the property at Holly Language we're keeping, and the hot property at Bassett that we're keeping. So for this particular case, and in talking to the city, the city just had a recreation committee meeting, I think maybe two weeks ago, and they discussed the recreational use that they would like to do. Now, in that meeting, I think, I believe they talked about two all-purpose premier fields and one baseball field, 90-foot, a good-sized one. And I think when they came out of that meeting, they were concerned about fitting everything, and also being able to account for parking. So I do know that they are still in discussions of specifically what that is gonna look like, but their commitment is that it is gonna be recreational purposes. So whether it's one field, two fields, this kind of, I don't know specifically, I don't know, they still have some things to work out. But they are dedicated to utilizing that for the recreation fields. Now, one of the things that they have to do is they need to go to bid, and they need to get their contractor started, because they want to get the building down as soon as possible, so that they can get to work on the fields. So that will take them some time. So there is a resolution on, and really what we're saying in the resolution is that we are not going to exercise our buyback option that we have in that week. So that's what that is, and to give a little bit of history to that. We have some staffing items on here, we have renewal of administrators, we have classified staff additions, which includes Jake, who is taking over for Vicky Beck, who retired. I'm not sure if everybody knew that, but Vicky did retire, and we're happy for her. We have some after-school tutoring that, I believe that's being paid out of SRS, right, for some students. And spring athletic supplementals, a specific athletic supplemental that's on there, but that's on for next fall, is Jason Hall returning as the head football coach. We're really, really excited about having Jason come back in, into that position. Caitlin Soltes is on there for Title I Summer Intervention Coordinator. And what Caitlin did for us last year, she'll do again, and she coordinated our summer programming in Title I, did a really nice job, eventually she would like to be an administrator, and so this gives her good experience in doing that. There's an OHSAA renewal, that is necessary for us to participate in sanctioned athletics. And there's also an approval on there for Dennis Sullivan, as, to be recognized as an indoor track coach. And that has to happen for us to send students to the indoor track state championship meet. Now, I want to be clear, that's not bringing, that's not onboarding indoor as a full sanctioned sport or anything, but when we recognize him as a coach, he can then go take students to that track meet. The last thing is, that I'll mention is a calendar, and it's for next year. You already approved this calendar. However, the calendar that we approved after reviewing again is one day short. And so we did have to add a student's date to that calendar, and you can hear the collective gasp from all of our seniors don't care, but our other students, I think, just had a chill go down their spine, realizing you have to stay another day. So those, no, 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 they love it. So that's what I have in my report, and I will pause from there, and you can ask me questions as we go through my items.
Questions from the board?
So where do we add the days?
I think it was the last day of school, Bob there?
Right.
He had him behind there, okay, I hear his voice, but there's, I feel like I'm at municipal stadium.
Other questions? So Dr. Guy, and that's your report, we'll come back.
Yeah, recommendations, we can talk about them during the recommendations.
Alright, we'll do.
Yeah.
On to the treasurer's report.
Honestly, tonight, I have nothing formal to report, so I just have my two recommendations
Sure.
that are relatively quick.
Right.
So within an hour of four items, and then we have the return of the advance, as we had invoiced UH for name recognition. We received that payment, so we're just returning that advance back. I'll be answering any questions, because that's all I have for tonight.
What's the turf holding up? I mean, how many years has it been out?
So it was installed in the summer of 2016. So you're looking at, you know, five, six years that you've had use of it so far. I've not heard of any complaints. We do have the conditioner, and we try to maintain it as much as possible. But they're expected to last about 12 years, so about halfway through the lifespan. Yep.
Several teams, I mean, I know the last couple of years have been crazy, but, I mean, lacrosse
Lacrosse uses it in the spring, soccer occasionally, although they typically use refuel like you. You obviously have football, different levels of football, and then, you know, you'll even have this time of year, baseball or softball, going out there to practice when the weather's decent, but you've got too soggy and natural grass.
You say lacrosse was out there the other night.
Yeah, the weather actually turned up.
No, it was cold.
Well, the snow, snow wise, it was nice enough to see snow, and it's a good use, yeah. Any other questions for Mr. Hopkins?
So there's the board, you're welcome to combine the two, there's no reason to have
Is there a motion to approve treasurer's recommendations for A and for B?
So, second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Yes.
Losensky.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Kurna.
Yes.
Stole.
Yes.
Motion carries.
To the superintendent's recommendation.
Great, we'd like to recognize our gifts and donations from Vincent and Christina Mars, donated an elliptical and a treadmill to the weight room at Westlake High School. And Dave Girington donated $100 to the Nick Massa Memorial Scholarship Fund at Westlake High School. Like to thank them for their donation, they have donations, we have a very generous community. And then what I'll do from there is, when I explained some of my items already, and to to vote on separately, I would recommend 5A separate, 5B separate, 5C separate. And then, if you want to do 5D as in dog who pee, I mean, that, that would probably cover that, if that's something that's okay with you.
There are motions to approve superintendent's recommendation 5A.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. We always say a thank you, thank you, thank you, to our very generous community for their gifts to the district, thank you. Further discussion? Roll call.
Stole.
Yes.
Fenuken.
Yes.
Craft.
Yes.
Losensky.
Yes.
Kurna.
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are motions to approve superintendent's recommendation 5B.
Second.
Discussion.
This is where we can wrap, I know.
Absolutely.
Thank you Kathy for would you mind being on the spot?
Join us? No, I would do not, it's mine, I mean, that's fine. Thank you for asking me to come tonight. So I'm just gonna tell you a little bit about preschoolers, and then if you have any questions about accepting the getting rid of the mask mandate. So there was some concern before about medically fragile students in our program, and we do have, I would say, one, two kids that are medically fragile, they're both in my classroom. So I'm very close with their parents and in contact with them, to the point where, at one point, we had to double mask and to make sure everything was going well, you know. Parents are aware that we do have a lot of children that are in the mask exemptions, so they were fine with that. The good news that I have to report of this one student I had, is she's just now been cleared. And her pulmonary doctor has said that she can go to birthday parties, she can follow the CDC measures. So everything's good with that, so we can leave aside a relief. But at first, when K through 12, the mandate went away, I had a lot of students asking me, well, how come my brother doesn't have to wear a mask, but I do? And I did want to make sure that we were considering that if it was one classroom that needed to continue wearing the mask, then not to change it, you know, other classrooms could follow the release of the mandate. We have probably 15 kids that are mask exempt for some medical reason, or they're just unable to wear a mask. So that gives you an idea, I think there's probably 70 kids in our program, 65, 70 kids? Okay, so about 15 of them are not wearing masks. It is really difficult to get a three-year-old to wear a mask. They are very wet, and I think that is a host of many other problems besides COVID. So that's one reason that I'm excited about it. So they keep them below their nose, they're very wet, we need to keep reminding them to have them on. It's funny, a lot of our afternoon kids or older kids are getting vaccinated. I never thought it would come to the day where I heard a student come in and go, this Kathy, guess what? And I'm like, what? I'm fully vaccinated. So they're excited about it, they're asking when we can take the masks off. We do have some parents that are asking also, I do understand you can't just change it tonight.
Sure.
You need to let the parents know. So if we consider that our kids are healthy enough to go without the masks, that some of the masks are causing maybe more illnesses, and then you get into the education. And a lot of our kids in our programs have speech delays or language delays, and those muffled little voices, and I'm always asking, what did you say? I have old ears, what did you say again? And when they have a difficulty time, a difficult time speaking, or maybe their confidence isn't the greatest, when you keep asking them what, then they can't, they shut down a little bit. When, we can wear shields, so they can see our lips, but when we want them to make that sound, or that "guh" sound, we can't see their lips. So that's difficult with the language. And then also with the bonding with their friends, they haven't seen their friends' faces. I mean, kids are really resilient, and I am very impressed in how they can read my eye language, if I'm happy or not. And they get it with their friends too, but they need to see their friends' faces. So I don't know if you have any other questions or concerns?
I do, and as far as any I do. And and as far as any other, any other considerations in in regard to timing. If we just have, if we have a conversation here about focusing on communication. And saying, you know, we can send out a communication tomorrow and then, you know, lift Wednesday or Thursday. Do you see any? Any other considerations we need when we look at a timing, any type of?
No.
Change in your classroom or anything that that your your group would need?
No, and if if the changes in my classroom had happened, where we still had some, I would say yes. Because I wanted to be able to communicate with my families to see if they would continue masking for the support of the student. So I would say, hold off, let me contact my families before you put out the word. But that's not the case anymore. So I don't think communication or timing is going to be a factor. So I think we're set with that. And I sent out, you know, an email last night saying that I was going to come here. I just wanted to make sure we're all on the same page and everybody was on the same page who had a concern. So I think.
Is it your opinion that the sooner the better? Is that what I'm hearing?
Yes. It was necessary. We had to do it. I do have a classroom that maybe half the kids are wearing masks and half aren't. There are other classrooms that all the kids are wearing masks and they did a wonderful job, but it's so hard to teach them. It's especially at this age. You know, it's hard for everybody, but I I think our youngest ones are hard. It's harder.
Dr. Morgan, you spoke with other preschool teachers. Do you have anything to add at all? If so, clap.
I'll share the podium.
Good evening. There was just one classroom of our more. It's our most restrictive classroom that we have in the center. All of the students in that classroom have been included in the mask exemption because of the nature of their disabilities. And that teacher was just a little bit nervous about releasing the mask exemption only because her students tend to be more vulnerable. About unable to wear the masks, a little bit more complicated disabilities. And her hesitance was only about other kids being unmasked, making her population more vulnerable. That would be the only thing I would think that we might want to make sure in timing wise. If there is anybody who has a kiddo where they are concerned about their health. And I'm super thankful that your kiddos are in a new situation. That's exciting. We just give her some time to hear from the families in her classroom so that we could environmentally engineer. Other things, including on the bus if needed, if we're worried about any of those kids. But ultimately, all of the staff are on board with the new guidance. And are eager to be able to see little faces. And we'll go with parent choice and the new health guidelines, so.
So when you talk about that that timeline to be able, if we sent out a communication tomorrow, well, we will send out a community. If the board is in support of this, we'll send a communication out tomorrow. And then the the timing for parents to communicate back to that teacher and.
This may be more time and Kathy, you're welcome to weigh in. But preschool, as a reminder, our center-based program only runs Monday through Thursday, so we don't have students on Friday. So I guess I would ask if we could consider starting a week from today, just to make sure there's time to communicate. And time for families who may be busy and may not pick up their phone and read their emails from us immediately. Just to let them have some opportunity to reach out in case there is a concern and then we just start with a fresh week. But again, if we need to move that up, we can do that.
You're looking at when, if if we sent out a communication tomorrow, you're looking at Wednesday and Thursday, basically.
Correct.
Is keeping it in there and then.
It's not a problem.
Would do. How do you feel about that, Kathy?
It's not a problem. We've been through this together.
Okay.
You know, we want to respect everybody's opinion and reach out to all those families. So I agree.
So Dr. Morgan, concerns still exist. Ms. Nash, you're going to chat with your families. Talk with Dr. Goggin and more than likely a communication will go out tomorrow.
Well, we can send a communication tomorrow and what I what I think I'm hearing is, and that's a good point, is because I. It does slip my mind that it is a four-day week program, not a five-day week program. So you are looking at a difference between two days. And so if that is the courtesy to families, you know, to be able to get that communication and 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 have it just be those two additional.
And even if we wanted to send the communication tomorrow and implement the the new release Thursday. It's one day. So either way, I mean, it doesn't matter. We can wait till March.
I just.
We'll wait till March. I mean, what is, how does the board feel? Other thoughts?
I'd like it as soon as possible.
Yeah, that's what I said too. Monday's fine.
Judging from some of the emails we got, everything, so Thursday would be great, but if not, then Monday.
Is is your communication just an email or is it an email from all?
It it's just going to be an email.
I would, I'd be okay with moving it. If we were able to do multiple communications to the parents. Because my my concern is, as long as I'm looking at an email, but they'll may respond, they may pick up the phone for a message.
Well, to John's point, now, the the school messenger could go out. But as Ms. Nash mentioned earlier.
You'll have your own.
Is that that, you know, are, we have, those are such small classrooms and they're, they become so intimate. That we can even have the teachers follow up with a message.
Correct. We could send out a message tomorrow and as soon as we hear back from, you know, after your message goes out.
Yeah.
We could, and as soon as we hear back from the parents, we're good to go.
Right. And I I do think my recommendation is just being a little extra cautious. But understanding that there are families who have individualized health concerns. I just, and you know that I'm the one who lives in the world of gray. It's not as black and white. And I just want to be respectful of any family that may have health concerns. Specifically where our preschool population is together the most is on our transportation. And I, if there were a family who had a concern. I would just like to give Mr. House and his crew as much time as possible to see about reconfiguring seating. To maybe put, if there is one or two kids, and I I don't know if there will be. But they are currently mask exempt in this class. And if we need to put kids in a different seat on the bus, which is limited because of the car seats and all that and how full they are. I would just like to have a little bit of grace to do that instead of asking Mr. House to do that on the fly as we do lots of things.
Right, right.
So what if I can, can we reach consensus would would be okay with if? I'll send a communication tomorrow. The preschool teachers will follow up with a communication. Listening to what Dr. Morgan's saying about having that little bit of time, not only for people to communicate back. But if there's any transportation adjustments, can we live with Monday?
Yes.
Is that? Okay.
That sounds great.
Okay.
Yes, and thank you for asking us here tonight.
That's no problem.
We have a family game night on March 23rd at Wes at from six to seven. You're more than welcome to come join us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hopkins, have we moved? I believe we have.
So for the discussion. With then, what I'm hearing and I gave you, I provided a draft of the continuity of education plan to you in Board Docs. And it does have an update on two twenty-eight. And the adjustment one page four. It's it it's listed on their master optional and strongly recommended for grades PK through 12. I will make the adjustment on there and say K through 12. But I'll change preschool starting, what's Monday's day? March seven, March seventh. So that will be the one adjustment to that document would be just reflecting that PK would start on Monday. The seventh. Is that okay? And then, you know, a couple of different things on there when you look at. Page. Let's see what page is this, seven, six and seven, where we start, where we talk about masks to stay. We do have an asterisk in there saying subject to change based on recommendations from Department of Health and Center for Disease Control and Prevention. So if ODH comes out and says we're eliminating masks to stay, I'm not going to continue it, you know, after, okay. All right. Make sure we're cool.
I understand.
All right.
Further discussion?
Wouldn't that be nice? I don't, I don't want to put my reports earlier anymore. Roll call?
Finukin?
Yes.
Kurna?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Losensky?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
There are motion to approve superintendent's recommendation five C. Discussion?
It's time that the city is making. What their expectations were. I was curious though. What was the, the sentiment? Two weeks ago? He presented it. So that was just the only concern was. Ability to put their hope and put on there.
I think that, yeah, I think the, well, obviously the the sizing, yeah, and and parking. Will everything fit and, you know, taking into account probably neighbors, you know.
Yeah.
To to be able to engage with them a bit as well, but. From my understanding, that was not.
I think about that because an original plan that was discussed, what between Bradley and Crocker kind of got shut down. Because of neighbors, although this particular space, and I know there's there's plans out there, but this particular space on Parkside. Baseball has been played there before, soccer has been played there before, football has been played there before.
It actually worked out really well. For the city to be able to host baseball and softball tournaments.
Right.
Because you have gear, you have the news facility, the house. Couple fields that you're still playing as well. So, yeah, this this.
Yeah, and at the time, and even I think during their conversations, there were multiple concerns in regard to Bradley.
Right.
You know, there was the fact it is the two-lane road and and putting the increased traffic there. There was the wetland situation as we we've owned that property for a long, long time. And we know that there's significant wetland mitigation that would happen there. And also, the, I they've been discussing different plans for the golf course. And I think not putting those there would then let the them pursue some other plans for the golf course, which sound really neat as well. And there was one other, oh, and the the proximity of this field space to Clay. And and the other fields to be able, so those were all, I, those are things that I had heard that that they were discussing.
I think this is a tough one to measure, but this new council seems very excited about that plan on Parkside. Further discussion?
What are your plans for taking down the old administration?
That I believe that is in their plans as well. Well, I don't know. I don't know if it's part of that. I don't think they're putting any type of recreation fields or anything there. So it's not, I I don't believe it's part of this.
They do plan to.
That's, that is my understanding. Now, what I will do is after you vote on this, if it is approved, we will then send, I'll send a letter on your behalf to the city. Memorializing.
Thank you. Further discussion? Roll call?
Finukin?
Yes.
Losensky?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Kurna?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion to approve superintendent's recommendations five D? E, F, G, H, I, J, K, L, M, N, O, and P. Did you like that?
It very nicely does.
That's next.
So move.
Second.
Discussion?
I would say your time with Dr. Rager about Coach Hall coming back. It'll be largely seen by a lot of the parents, especially when he wasn't in, he was very active. Probably sophomores, juniors that are there who are very familiar with him.
I've already heard a number, but thanks. People are excited.
Us too. Yes, you know, there was, we we didn't think that we were going to be able to. Get him to come back and, you know, and it's also nice when you have someone who's currently on staff. And you're not bringing someone in and having another person join the staff. And he's he's really good teacher too, so very happy with that.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Stoll?
Yes.
Finukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Losensky?
Yes.
Kurna?
Yes.
Motion carries.
At this time, we have a second hearing of the public. If anyone would like to address the board on any issue. Please raise your hand and let us know who you're going to address. Seeing now, I'm going to move on to board comments.
You know, wonderful event for Founder's Day. We had a number of staff members who were honored, including Nick Miller for DIAS. Mike Waters for the Council Award. All three nurses received the Helping Hands Award and the Outstanding District Educator went to Will Wilson from the high school. It's a lot of.
All-star group.
Yeah, a lot of fantastic parent volunteers will recognize that evening also. It's funny.
I would shout out to the boys' basketball team. They had a very good season. Unfortunately, it ended sooner than I'm sure they anticipated, but, you know, winning the conference. And this is official in the first year.
This is the first year?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That was a tough game they lost though.
Put those banners up in the gym.
I know Dr. Gagen, you brought up transportation and buses potentially with cameras on them. Any any further thoughts on that?
I don't think we've received our quotes back yet for new camera systems on the buses.
We we have three quotations, but we're only one of them down. So we are still working on those.
Thank you. Anything else?
I would just, I, we were at a function in Wasworth, Ohio Saturday night. And I met the, sat at the table with the mayor of Wasworth and their state representative. And we were discussing, you know, being a state representative, being a mayor, being on school board. And they all agreed that they didn't want my job. They said it's been a rough year. I said it's been a rough year for everybody.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to say thanks to my fellow board members. Persistence and staying in force and. Doing your civic duty.
Thank you.
I should have noted in Founder's Day, our state record, Monique Smith did attend. And she was loved seeing all the wonderful things that are going on in schools.
All right. I'm going to move on to our second reading of the policies and Dr. Goggin.
Sure.
Want our approval on that?
Yes, that would be wonderful. There. That I did pull one of the policies. I have to revisit the number, do you remember, fifty-seven something or other? And it's it's about different levels of oversight on things like. Like school publications. And and I pulled that because I do think we need to have a little more discussion on that.
Sure.
So we can add that to.
Fifty-seven twenty-two.
Fifty-seven twenty-two. And the other ones are pretty much the same as originally posted. There were a couple of them are also up in the new policy update. So I just made a couple, made those adjustments directly to this policy update, so we won't have to update it again. And it was just a couple of words within those. But other than that, they remain the same as what was presented before. And if you have questions on any specific ones.
Sure. Sure. Any other thoughts or comments on policy? Is there a motion to approve policies and eight A policies and policy changes? Discussion? Roll call?
Kurnat?
Yes.
Losensky?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Stoll?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Is there a motion to adjourn to executive session to discuss the appointment, employment dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion, or compensation of an employer official?
So move.
Second.
Discussion? Roll call?
To adjourn into executive session at six fifty-one PM. Stoll?
Yes.
Fanukin?
Yes.
Kraft?
Yes.
Losensky?
Yes.
Kurnat?
Yes.
You're in the executive session.
Alright, the board will not take action in executive session nor when we uh, come out of executive session.